Yeah, we have, we have a quorum. Uh, call the meeting to order. Seated tonight is myself, David Rathbun, Ben Philbrook, Fred Dykman, and Ryan Deasy. First, we'll have the minutes of the previous meeting. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both ayes have it. Okay, um, item D, Keith?
There we go, item 4D, the administrative review items. 41 is, um, request a 90-day extension of filing the final plans for the previously approved subdivision application, PZ 2002 SD and CAM, Michael Larcia Jr., Greg Fettis. This was a subdivision, a three-lot subdivision approved back in May. State statutes give, um, up to two 90-day extensions that can be granted for them to file the final plans and the land records. They just still have to do some of the, um, legal requirements, you know, the fee in lieu of open space and, you know, the lawyer's documents that have to be done before the final plans are filed. And these extensions are routinely given. The statutes don't really give, uh, a reason to say no.
Do I hear a motion on this extension?
Motion to approve the extension.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both ayes have it.
And, um, for old business, item 6A is a PZ 2020 SPA and CAM, Latimer Point Condominium Association. Site plan and coastal area management review applications for first and second floor additions, deck additions, demo and replacement of single-family residence and installation of two new septic systems. Property located at 10 Center Drive, 8 North Shoreway, 111 Latimer Point Road, Stonington, Connecticut. Assessors' maps, block and lots 154 for 32, 154 to 13, 154 for 3, Zone RM 20. And, um, the applicant, Mr. Lally's here to present this to the commission.
I think Mr. Lally's on mute.
Can't hear him.
Can't hear you.
Let's see.
He's on his laptop.
He's, he seems to be muted.
Ed, can you try now? No. Huh.
We saw him before.
Right, now, he's there whenever I try to unmute him, nothing happens.
Doesn't look like his microphone is connected, Keith.
Okay. It's like not, may not be connected. Well. I guess I'll go through the, uh, the basics here. Basically, the Latimer Point, uh, condo association, is recognized by one lot by the town, even though if you go there, it looks like a bunch of single-family houses. But it is a condo association. So all the town zoning requirements, like setbacks, floor area, other block requirements apply to the, um, to the entire property, not the individual lots. Even though if you look at the assessor's map, there are a bunch of, uh, individual lots there. In the, in the 90s, basically, the condo association and the Planning and Zoning Commission essentially established this process where, instead of them applying for variances for every little thing, they'd come before the commission roughly every year or so to kind of bundle all these smaller requests to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Most of the properties in the RM 20 zone, there's a strip of RC 120 along the south and west coast here. As far as what they are looking to do, there's three properties involved. 10 Center Drive is looking just for a 258 addition to the second floor. 111 Latimer Point Road is, um, looking for a total of 561 square foot additions, the first and second floor, and decks on the first and second floor, new septic system. 8 North Shoreway is looking to demolish the existing house and construct a new, um, 2,400, roughly, square foot dwelling unit. There are really no zoning app, zoning issues with this application. The house on north, 8 North Shoreway, is located in the FEMA Coastal AE Zone in which the, um, the V-zone standards have to be met there. The town requires that new construction, substantial improvement in these areas have to be more than 100 feet from mean high water. The existing house will reduce that non-conformity by being located farther away from the coast. And the house is designed to meet the coastal AE standard. Um, we did get some comments from the town engineer, on 8 North Shoreway, he had a few, um, basically clarifying comments that could easily be met with a stipulation for his final review. It was reviewed by the town's floodplain management consultant. So, um, we have a few recommended stipulations here. Number one, that the final plan shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer. Number two, that individual zoning permits for site development plans shall be submitted for properties that propose new construction and/or substantial improvement to ensure compliance with the flood hazard regulations on an individual lot development basis. Number three, improvements shall conform to the public health code requirements as determined by DEP. And decisions would be a decision on the CAM itself and a decision on the, uh, site plan application.
Hey Keith, I don't know if you saw, it looks like Ed was able to put something in the chat.
Okay. Yeah, uh, Mr. Lally says, uh, when he tags on mute, uh, it doesn't impact his ability to communicate. He apologizes for this. Would be pleased to accept all recommendations, all recommended stipulations, however, suggest adding requirement for individual sites to stipulation number two. Which, as I read, it does say individual zoning permits for site development plans. So if I'm understanding it right, it would, it would, uh, require individual site development plans?
All the other ones seem all right, Keith?
Uh, yes.
Any, any questions, any further questions on this? I see that Gardner Young has now joined us. Is Lynn here?
Lynn is also here.
I had, I had trouble sitting on with Keith's link. I went to Gail's link, was able to log on.
Keith, this is Lynn, um, about Latimer Point. Does, does the association have any view restrictive, um, limitations for additions or whatever buildings?
They do. The Latimer Point condo association has their own regu, private regulations, um, and view restrictions are part of it. So, um, anyone who's proposing something like this, like a new house, has to go before their board and get approval from their regulations. And they have an architect who analyzes the view sheds and other properties. So before they come to this board, they have to go through the Latimer Point condo association to get that approval.
Thanks, Keith. I don't have any other questions.
Does anyone have any question, any further questions at this time?
No.
No.
Do I hear a motion on this application?
Make a motion to approve the applications with the stipulations as Keith listed them.
Do I hear a second?
Second of the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both ayes have it.
Now, do we need to vote on the, do we need to vote on the CAM separately, Keith? Or is?
Well, we might as well for, uh, formality's sake.
Do I hear a motion on the CAM?
Motion to approve the CAM.
Second of the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both ayes have it.
All right, so if we can just clarify that the five regular members are seated at this point?
The five regular members are here.
Okay, so I'm part of the program now?
Yep.
Okay.
And item 6P is PZ 2022BR Mystic Health Center LLC, David Ladizori, bond reduction release application for work performed under PZ 1833, ZC and SPA, Ladizori Development, Zone Change and Site Plan Applications for Construction of a 47,625 square foot medical office building for Hartford Healthcare, 100 Perkins Farm Drive, Assessors Map 50, Block 2, Lot 5, Zone GDD. Uh, this application is for the release of erosion and sedimentation control bond that was paid, um, for the construction of the Hartford Healthcare site. Um, it's just for Hartford Healthcare. It's not for the apartments or the other areas there. And this was $25,000. The town engineer's original comments noted that the stormwater basin outlet, um, did not have a proper, uh, steel plate on it that was needed. Um, so the applicants quickly remedied that. Town engineer's latest comments say that the applicant's installation of the steel plate at the outlet structure now satisfies my comments with regard to my November 3rd memo. Uh, therefore, I recommend full release of the bond. One minor issue is just that when we have these erosion and sedimentation control bonds, we have a requirement that they remain in place for one year after it's completed. Technically, a year won't be up until December 23rd, uh, 2020. So, um, we recommend full release of the bond, but with one stipulation of approval, that fund shall not be released until December 23rd, 2020, which is one year from certificate of compliance.
Do I hear a motion on this application?
Motion to approve.
With the one year, yep.
Extension.
Fred?
With the extension to the December 23rd.
Second of the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both ayes have it.
And, um, old business, item 6C, I recommend tabling, um, pending ADRB review. So that won't be until, uh, the meeting, the second meeting in December, that the commission can take this up. This is for Fair Acres Park on Whitehall. And with that, it concludes old business.
At this time, we'll go to the continuation, the public hearing. Do we need to read this in the minutes, the whole thing, uh, Keith? Does Ben have to work on this?
He can handle it.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember if we usually do that.
Go ahead, Ben.
Uh, you're making me pull out my phone. Hang on, please, people. Well, I usually, I usually print out the call. Pursuant to the General Statutes of the State of Connecticut, Revision of 1958, and all amendments there too, and pursuant to the zoning regulations for the town of Stonington, Connecticut, Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice that it will hold the public hearing on Tuesday, November 17th, 2020, at 7:00 PM by virtual meeting on the following applications. First up, EZ 2018 SUP and CAM, Redevelopment LLC, S. Shirensia, Special Use Permit and Coastal Area Management Review Applications for the redevelopment, change of use from automotive service gas station to small hotel, previously to restaurant. Proposal includes demolition of existing structure, parking, stormwater management, utilities, and associated landscaping. Property located at 32 Broadway Ave, Mystic, Assessors Map 174, Black 19, Lot 1, Zone LS-5, Continued from 11420.
Thank you, Ben.
You're welcome, sir.
First, we'll hear from the applicant and all the additions and changes that we've had since the last meeting. Then we'll hear from anyone in favor of it, and then we'll hear from anyone in opposition to it, and then we'll hear any general comments on this application. So, and then we'll hear from the staff. Uh, at this time, Sergio, you're on.
Sergio.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, members of the board. And, uh, also wanted to just thank you for entertaining this, uh, at this meeting. We met, as you recall, uh, last, about two weeks ago. November 4th is the last meeting where we made presentation at the time which, uh, the, the board, the commission requested that we submit revised plans, uh, so, which, which is what we have done in the interim. And, uh, we believe that we have addressed all of the concerns that were brought up, uh, at the previous, uh, meeting. Um, if I may, I'm just gonna go highlight some of the things on the site plan that have changed and, uh, to address some of the comments. Um, with me this evening, uh, is Elena Pascharella, the landscape architect, and Mark Camo, the project architect. I'll defer to them on their, uh, the changes that they, they addressed, on their ends, um, to make sure that we could meet all the regulatory requirements and, uh, and, uh, hopefully address everything that was of concern of this commission. So what I'm gonna do is I will share my screen to get right into... It'll come up here, yeah. Might take just a minute here, hopefully it comes up. So, uh, what should be in front of your screens right now is the proposed site plan. Uh, one of the items, uh, that was, um, commented on by the planning staff, and I believe we did, we addressed during the meeting, were the, uh, two parking spaces off of Washington, close as to Washington Street, as well as the, uh, the introduction of a, um, sidewalk along Washington Street. Uh, as you can see from the proposed site, revised site plan, we have accommodated, uh, the, the sidewalk, uh, with, with ADA ramps and, uh, mo, and detect, detections, uh, detection areas on those ramps. Uh, a small area for landscaping. It's a, just a, a snow shelf, grass, snow shelf, and curbing along Washington Street. We did not, uh, change the location of the building, nor the landscaped area and fire retention area on the corner of Washington Street and Broadway Avenue. However, the two spaces, uh, that were designated as parking spaces, given COVID and, um, and, uh, the need for a little bit more outside space, uh, what we did was convert those parking spaces into, um, more passive recreational type space where we can put, um, planter boxes so we can have some landscaping and to create a border around these areas, uh, to delineate them from the rest of the building and the, and the driveway area, as well as, uh, some seating, um, for these spaces. You know, tables and chairs, uh, so that people have an area to, to sit at, at the ground level. The other, that, we can still accommodate, uh, I will note, we can still accommodate all the parking required for the, for the use, uh, with the, with the balance of the parking left of, in the, uh, on, on the property. In addition to, uh, the, uh, additional spaces and the sidewalks along Washington Street, they, there was a question to include the, the size of trees at maturity. Elena, would you mind, uh, commenting? I think I have your landscape plans, if I'll bring them up. And you, if you don't mind just addressing the, uh, the tree heights?
Sure. Um, well, those are elevations, and they probably are bet, better illustrative of what's happening with the landscaping than the actual plan view. So this is the view, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Um, this is the view, um, looking along, uh, Broadway towards the, um, east, east side of the building. You can see the green screen in the background. To the, uh, right, or the left side of that drawing, you'll see a large tree and, uh, a small planting area. And then you see that, um, that dark, uh, columnar evergreen. That's gonna be an evergreen border along the south parking lot side that'll define the property from the fire station. And then to the right side of that elevation, you're seeing some, um, plantings. You're seeing a smaller tree. It's just to provide shade within that area. And you have a variety of shrubs that will be going around the perimeter, the outside of the upper perimeter of that, uh, fire retention area, infiltration area. And the, a row of evergreens along that, that, um, blank wall uh, at, at the lowest level of the hotel. We've reviewed the landscaping with the ADRB. So these, this meets their suggestions, notably, uh, the landscape architect on that, uh, committee, Christopher Thor. And then we also adjusted the plan to meet comments of the town engineer. We did move trees further away from the sidewalk, and we're going to be putting, um, root barrier around the trees to ensure that they don't encroach in, uh, roots don't grow into the sidewalk.
I have a couple of questions, Elena, if I may.
Sure.
Does the green wall, and, earlier than it didn't before? I mean, it looks like it terminates at the corner of the building rather than going to the sidewalk?
It, it does, and it don't, and it always did. I, I think the earlier, uh, um, how shall I put it? The, the earlier, uh, elevations didn't, didn't reveal that very clearly.
Okay, and were you going to, I thought you were not going to plant around the windows of the, um,
The hotel?
Neighbor next door. No, the neighbor next door on the green wall. We had talked, I thought the last thing we'd mentioned, you were saying the grid would be there for the green wall, but you were going to skip planting on the windows for the mystic, what I call the mystic lumber, the mystic junction building.
Um, we reviewed that, and it was felt that having, having a green wall, with a solid green wall, would be the, the most aesthetically pleasing approach to, to that.
Elena, I'm, I'm gonna jump in. Ben, was that your question? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes, so, uh, after discussing with, with my client, he is very concerned of what could happen on that building. Uh, he's, he's spoken to the owner of that building, and, uh, they've, they've mentioned that they, I think I said it at the last meeting, that they're gonna have the, uh, the Hygienic Art Cooperative, or whatever it is over there, they may paint a mural on the side of that building. So, um, it is conditioned, uh, in, in your approval this evening to raise that green wall, uh, or to, excuse me, to lower the green wall below the windows. However, my client feels that he's in, within his rights and wants to protect, uh, his property, from what potentially could be painted on that wall by bringing the screen, the green screen to the entirety, to the top of that building.
All right, well, my understanding, I thought Elena has suggested that perhaps you put the grid up for the planting, but you just don't plant in front of the windows. And I don't think a mural's gonna be put on those two windows.
We could, we could review that with the client and, and again, and see what his, his thoughts are on that.
To my, to my mind, it would break up that, the wall effect a little bit. It would give it a little depth.
Well, you basically would have, just be seeing a, a framework.
Right. And I'm not sure who this question goes to, but, um, is there a bike rack involved? I don't see it on any drawings.
We did not place a bike rack, but you could certainly, there are a number of locations where it could be placed.
Hold on. Elena, there is a, there is a bike rack, I'm sorry.
Is there?
If you look, yep, if you look just between the elevator and the stairs,
Oh, right.
Have it up on the plan, you can see there's a couple of bikes. We actually, we actually placed one underneath the building undercover.
That's right, I see them now, yep.
The little white, okay.
Little white things.
Thank you very much, that's it for me.
I have one question. What about snow removal?
Yeah, I can, I can address that. Um, so if, snow, snow would typically be piled on site. If it's not a lot of snow, it would have to, it would have to allow, be allowed to melt, just as the same as any stormwater runoff would, into the infiltration basins, and then, uh, be handled like typically any other stormwater. Should the snow be, uh, become an issue, it will be have, it will have to be, uh, loaded and moved off, off-site, because it would impede parking. There just really is no place to stockpile snow, and it's typically not allowed to be stockpiled in infiltration areas. So, to the extent where we can pile it on-site and say, you know, some of the, over, over, uh, the, the additional parking spaces that are available, we would try to do that on smaller storm, storm events. But if there's a significant storm event, it would have to be, uh, taken off-site.
Okay, so, so what would be significant? Six inches?
I mean, it all depends on how, how much snow you get and how warm the next day is gonna be if it's gonna melt away. But, uh, basically, I mean, if, if we can't accommodate our parking and there's gonna be a pile of snow there, it's gonna have to be removed.
Are there any other changes?
Um, yes, at this time, I think I'll, uh, I'll put it to Mark Camo, because he's going to go over some of the building changes that took place in order to identify that we don't have any enclosed or floor area on the, on the third story. He also has some additional renderings, I think the, uh, the commission requested, uh, that he can present.
Sergio, this is Lynn Conway. Before you do that, can I ask a question about the outdoor seating, I think it falls under the landscape? So what I heard you describe was that we're gonna have planters kind of around that corner. And to allow for people to sit outside or whatever, is that is that correct?
Correct, any landscaping will be done in planter boxes and then the the seats would be, you know, able to be moved 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 in and out, it'll be kind of a flexible space for outside seating.
So what are you thinking for outside seating? What are you what are you thinking for numbers with that total air area?
I'm not sure exactly, we show, we're showing four seats in each space, it's just enough for a table and chairs.
So just one table with four seats?
Yeah, approximately so, yeah.
Okay, and then is there reason, Sergio and and Elena, that that you would not plant shrub versus having planters? So it's a more permanent space rather than planters that are knocked around, etc.
The purpose of the planters is just to make it a more flexible space. So that it's it's more transient, it can be, it can be pulled in during the winter time. And can be, the planter boxes can go out during the the better weather when they can be planted with with nice perennials or something like that.
So would you be opposed for for making that shrub? The hedge?
I don't, I don't find that shrub plantings or hedge plantings between two paved areas survive very well. There's a lot of stress put on plantings in a situation like that. And and I think that was another reason for suggesting raised planters. You know, there's there's more flexibility, again, as Sergio indicated, there's more flexibility with them in terms of the how how you can configure them. And I just, as a as a landscape architect, a narrow planting bed with a hedge just between one pavement area and another pavement area is there's a lot of stress put on the plants or survivability, I think.
Okay, thank you, Elena.
Okay, I'll jump in. Can you guys hear me? Mark Camo?
Yes.
Yes. And and by the way, Lynn, just to back up what Elena said. Both at the Charter Oak, which used to be a Starbucks, there was in-ground plantings that had more than a 50% fatality on the plants. The Odd Fellows Building had the same thing. And the planter boxes at Bravo have the boxwood within the planters. And they're very robust and they're they're able to, because they're not getting the salt from the you know, from the street and from the from the from the plows and all that, so there's actually more of a survival rate in the landscape to that end. I'm gonna share my screen.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. I agree with you, I hadn't thought of it that way, so totally totally agree.
Okay. So I think it was Lynn, I think it was you that asked about evening projected views. And and you know, you gotta remember that this is hard to do. So we plan on putting these these very low-level LED lights on the pilasters. We think there's gonna be enough glow from the building itself and ambient light from around us that that the lighting is just not going to be you know, an issue, we're not gonna be broadcasting this this massive amount of light. It's a really hard thing to to render, I actually had to turn the lighting up to even make this visible in the computer program. So the lighting level is above what it actually would be. I'm gonna close this one and just go to another one, I can always reopen them. So this is kind of a dusk view of what we see. And these are very low lamp 15 watt LEDs that just wash the pilasters. There's like no residual light that will come off of that and go anywhere else, it's just simply to light the surface of the building. We're more than open to 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 any kind of lamp that you might suggest, but these are actually on Central Hall. And they do a very good job of just basically lighting the facade but giving off no light around it, so that's a dusky kind of setting there. And again, I had to jack up the lighting just to get these things to even show from what the from what the LEDs had had presented in real lumens. And here's another picture here of the same thing.
So Mark, I understand about the LEDs on the kind of the pilings or the moldings on the edges. But what about, and I see your picture doesn't really show it, are those shades? Especially on that third floor? You know, is that all gonna be, if it's if it's lit? You know, at at people are outside, they're exercising, whatnot?
Up in the third floor? Whoops. No, I mean, there'd be there'd be no need up there at night, there'd be no activity really going up on. We there'd be level, in pool level lighting within that area. But I don't, I don't, because this is not enclosed, I don't know that there'd be operations going on at that time. I wanted to also show you, I've got a revised plan of that third floor. That might be a little more clear. You can see that that this is all, this is all open. Move this over here. So in the, in this area here, it's wide open on the third floor. And then these are all pergola beams over this area here, open to the sky, I think there was some confusion before whether that was a hard roof, the only hard roof on this third floor area is what you is, of course, the stair and the elevator. But when you get out into the rest of this, it's it's pretty much wide open as you can see. And I have also you know, again, remember, these are done on the computer the best we can. You know, this is how open it's going to be. You've got the pool area, you've got a couple of, you know, some cabana lounge chairs. And there is the exercise equipment and there's no walls, it's it's whistling Dixie up here, there's no enclosed space. Pergola over the entire area. And here is the other view here. And I apologize, I just didn't have time to throw the pergola beams over this area here, but they there would be. This stuff is kind of hard to do to get it all right. But it's wide open, you can see that it's pretty much wide open up there.
Thanks, I have to tell you, this looks a lot different than I had envisioned during the last meeting, so thank you.
Okay, and and again, it's gonna be very much softer, you know, these look like, they're just square boxes, but there'd be lots of millwork detail and paneling. You know my work. But but the computer, God bless them, they can create these views very easily. But also, God curse them because they're they're really hard to get what we need done. If I could, I have to apologize, I'm I I'm just, I'm up on the agenda at another town meeting right now, if I can step out. I trust that Sergio can answer my questions and I will come right back if I can do this quickly, okay? This is craziness.
Sounds good. So Sergio, I'm gonna ask you a question when Mark stepped out for a moment, but here's here's my concern about the third floor. And it's kind of like, is it gonna be a party central, right? So you know, Mark's point is it's not enclosed. Shouldn't be a lot of lighting up there and he certainly has, you know, helped to detail out what it's gonna look like. But you know, eight o'clock at night, it's a beautiful summer, summer night. You know, people wanna go up on top, they wanna party, have some guests over, etc., etc. What's the situation? Are you gonna close it at a certain time? How's that gonna work?
Excuse me, this is, this is Keith. Mark, we're still seeing your screen.
Oh. Thank you, Keith.
I'm trying to get out, I'm trying to figure out how to get out of this.
Mark, at the top, there should be a dropdown menu, you should be able to stop sharing.
Sorry about that, there we go, thanks. And and before I leave, Lynn, all those people partying, they're just entourage that I threw in there to to show scale.
Hi, Lynn, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, yes.
Okay, great. So I think your question was, you know, how, what what it precludes from people being up there partying all night long? What I can tell you is that it's it's not open to the public. That rooftop is an amenity that's only for hotel guests only, which is limited to the five rooms and the one resident manager. There really won't be a limit on to, you know, when it will be open and closed. But we don't anticipate that people will be up there late in the evenings and causing a lot of you know, issues with noise and that kind of thing, that we still have to abide by the noise ordinances, just like any other property, residential or otherwise. And that, I think, I think it wouldn't be unreasonable to to identify that, you know, most likely that, you know, things are gonna settle down around a reasonable hour, 10:00, 10:30 or so on that rooftop.
Sergio, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the nearest residence is probably a few hundred feet away too, isn't it?
Yeah, I have the the GIS up, I could I don't know if exactly, yes, I would think that, I believe you're correct, just doing a quick measure down Washington Street.
Washington or Apple, Apple Health?
It's about 275 feet to the to the west, to the closest residential property. And I believe across the way, probably about the same, assuming there's residences over on Washington, you know, a little over 200 feet away.
Yeah, so you know, Fred, this is Lynn, there's a, there are apartment that not, you know how there's not a building directly across on Broadway because they knocked that down?
Yes.
But then you kind of cross the street going down Broadway and there's small shops in the first floor, but those are all residences, yep.
Okay, so not not quite that far then.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is Ben, thank you, I meant to thank Mark Camo for showing us the west elevation and it's a big improvement to have that west elevation in the viewpoint. But can you review why you find it necessary to put the building in the setback zone? Just for clarity, one more time, please, Sergio.
And which which setback are you referring to?
I thought there was northwest corner was in the setback.
The northwest would be the, are we referring to the the additional 10 feet required for a third floor? Or are you talking about the canopy?
No, the first one, or by removing all that infrastructure on the third floor, are you working around that setback?
By by removing, by having no enclosed space on the on the rooftop deck, it's it's been, I believe, identified and the planner has concurred, but Keith can speak for himself that we meet the criteria that there's no, that it's not included, that's not considered a floor, which would put it a floor over two. So that provision in the in the regulations is only for floors over two. So we feel that if if we, since we've accommodated that we we have no enclosed space on the rooftop deck, that we don't have to add that additional. So if you look at it from the other perspective, your setback is five feet. When your when your building goes up by that third third floor, then you have to put in the additional 10, which we don't which we don't feel is warranted. If we did have to put that additional 10, and and right now, it's, I believe, it's it's around 8.7, so we're not, we'd have to move it another seven feet and change towards the street on Broadway. When we presented to the EDC, they said that wouldn't necessarily be a bad thing to put it close to the street, but I think there's there's enough evidence of other buildings in these in this vicinity where the buildings aren't up on the street. So it's it's a matter of, you know, about seven feet further back, which we think just with the massing along the street makes the building that much more attractive to be a little bit further off.
Thank you.
Sergio, can you put, can you put up a picture of the building again, maybe the east elevation for me? I have two questions.
Yeah, let me just pull up Mark's. And then I will share it, just taking a minute to load here.
Yep.
I believe you said you wanted to see the east elevation?
Any any elevation be fine, but east is east is fine.
I believe I have the east up now.
Okay. The the question I have is, is the space between the second floor and the roof deck? There does not seem to be any allowance there for the depth of the pool, which I thought was about four feet. So so that's gonna leave you with a stretch around the building of solid appearing you know, solid facade to accommodate the depths of the pool and the and the structure that's gonna require to hold the weight up there, isn't it not?
Yeah, I think it was a little bit Mark's rendering was a little little bit deceiving as the 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 actual pool will be elevated above the deck, so you you're correct, in the center of that, let me see if I can go to the so you will see this this structure here above the the rooftop floor, deck floor.
Oh, so it's gonna, it's gonna look like backyard pool kind of thing.
It's like, it's it's more of an above-ground pool.
Above-ground pool, yeah, exactly, okay.
But I think it lends itself to, instead of being able to jump in the pool, it's more of like a sitting area where you can sit on the edge of the pool and then turn around and go into the pool.
Okay, I didn't I didn't understand that at all and it kept troubling me that that there was no space for that pool to be there. And and so that then does not affect the overall height of the building?
No, and we we are actually, with respect to height, we are still considering these pergola structures at the top of the building and we still meet our height requirement.
Yeah, okay, good, thank you.
Is there any other questions at this time? Anyone like to speak in favor of this up, this application?
So this is Keith, if you're out there, please don't forget to unmute yourself. And if you are calling from a regular telephone, what you need to do is press star three, which raises your hand and informs me that you want to speak. In which case I can unmute you and then you will press star six in order to speak. um, in which case I can unmute you, and then you will press star six in order to speak.
And, uh, hearing none, anyone like to speak in opposition to this application?
Uh, this is Keith, I do have, I was asked to read some, uh, comments under opposition, and these were submitted, um, before the last meeting. The commission, if he's here. Uh, this is from Jesse Diggs at Eighth School Street. He says, "I've reviewed the subject application, and I am against granting a special use permit for the redevelopment, or change of use from automotive service and gas station to a small hotel. Um, while I'm not necessarily opposed to the concept of more restaurant or hotel accommodations in Mystic, the path should not be via the often-used special use permit approach, which suggests that a hardship for the property. But more importantly, the proposed design is clearly not in keeping with the style and scale of the surrounding historical area. It's an historical nature of Mystic that attracts visitors, not contemporary buildings that can overshadow the inherent history. I believe that the scale, lot coverage height, use of garden fence, rooftop pool, and overall contemporary design of the proposed hotel complex is inconsistent with most every aspect of the preamble and contents of the PZC regulations, beginning with section 1.0, Purpose and Authority, which states for the protection of historic factors in the character of the districts. Uh, there's nothing about the proposed design that indicates it belongs in historic Mystic. In the absence of a town historical review board, it becomes the responsibility of the PZC Commission to take on that role and reject the application on the ground cited above."
Other than the other ones, Keith?
Uh, not that we're asked to be read, I mean, we did receive comments before the last meeting. From Paul and Claire Sardar, which Mr. Tamski read last time, and from Rick Newton, that were form, uh, forwarded to the commission, um. Let me see, although Mr. Newton's comments were he listed as general comments. But again, if anyone's out there.
Anyone like to speak in opposition to this application? Are there any general comments on this application? Is Ben on tonight?
Yes.
He was, yes.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. I wasn't, I wasn't going to comment, but, um, under general comments, I would make one comment, and that is that, um, as I've stated before, I, I wish you would get back to the practice of taking, uh, comments from the public after the staff has given, uh, their, their comments. That's all I've got, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments, uh, Keith?
Well, we just received, um, right before the meeting, um, comments from DEP on the CAM application, which, uh, you haven't seen, and I just forward to the applicant beforehand. We have them in tiny writing on this tiny phone, so I will try to, uh, read them here.
Excuse me, Keith, can I ask a question before you get started? It was part of your staff report that identified that the DEP has 35 days to, um, to resp, to comment on an application? For state statute, so are these comments even relevant at this stage?
Well, I mean, they're beyond the timeframe that they have. You know, I don't want to not share them with the commission, but, you know, keep in mind that they are.
I thought because of COVID that they were, everything was extended.
Um, things are for land use applications, I'm not sure it applies to them.
Ke, Keith, Keith, I, I, I read through them, I don't think we necessarily have any issue with, with them, I think we've already accommodated a lot of them anyway.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to, to say that they're, you know, get out of, uh, addressing their comments, I just wanted a clarification, that's all.
Right, right, and they're not serious stuff here. Uh, basically, they say, um, to get to the, to meet a bit, uh, they strongly recommend overall impervious coverage be reduced and low-impact development options to manage stormwater be incorporated for the site. Options include pervious pavers, rain gardens, rain barrels, parking lot islands, and vegetated swales above ground. And that the applicant demonstrates that impervious surfaces have been reduced as much as possible, given site conditions. Moreover, we recommend that the suitability and infiltration capacity of the soils on site be evaluated in order to demonstrate the proposed infiltration basin's capability and efficacy to manage stormwater at the site, particularly for the basin that will manage stormwater from the larger parking lot area. Additionally, we recommend that a condition of approval for this project be incorporated, requiring that any snow removal be taken off-site and not placed on or in the proposed infiltration basins. As the site is primarily located within the FEMA AE Zone, elevation 11, as stated by the engineering report, we recommend verifying all FEMA National Flood Insurance Program requirements are met as to prevent to manage coastal hazard areas so as to ensure that development proceeds in such a manner that hazards to life and property are minimized. Finally, for the covered parking area, if a drain is being considered, then the effluent would have to meet the standards for treatment prior to the discharge to the municipal sewer system and noted in the plans. Um, this information is unclear from the submitted plans. Yeah, and that's it. So as far as, um, we touched about this at the last meeting, but the decisions for the commission are the special use permit waivers requested, the coastal area management application, and the special use permit application. You know, as the last time, the really, the only zoning issue was the, um, that setback that Mr. Philbrook mentioned, you know, there's that section in the zoning regulations that says for hotels and only hotels of over two floors, um, there's an additional setback requirement. So that's what, uh, caused them to come back before the commission and remove all the actual roof on the top roof level, with the exception of the stairs and elevator, in order to not make that top level a floor. So they've removed all the gross floor area from that level, um, because stairs and elevators don't count as gross floor area. Our regulations basically just describe a floor as the bottom of an enclosed space. As you can see, the exterior walls are still up for some of it, you know, there's still the window facing Broadway, but there's a pergola roof over it. And as we saw on Mr. Camo's interior renderings there, there's no exterior wall, it all just leads to an open roof there. The recommended stipulations, if you were to approve this, are slightly changed from last time. If you want me to go through all these, but I'll just say what the new ones are here. Um, this is on page 23 of the staff report. Uh, number nine is new, that the pro, proposed screening wall shall be lowered to not block the windows of the adjacent building. Although that's something you heard that the applicant, um, doesn't feel will be helpful. And number 10, that the applicant shall provide a flood evacuation plan to the Department of Planning prior to issuance of a zoning permit, which shall be recorded in the town's land evidence records. We may also want a number 11 based on DEP's comments, that snow removal shall be taken off-site, and not placed in the stormwater basins. Maybe we want to add the word significant snow removal or something like that, because, you know, you're not going to bet for one inch of snow. And as far as stormwater and some of those points that DEP brought up, we do have the stipulation there that final plan shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer, and one of the things that he requested is that, um, the, um, soil testing be done before the stormwater basins are, are put in.
Keith, this is Lynn. Um, I, I did have a question about the, that, um, applicant asking not to have soil testing done. And I don't know if this is outside of scope of what the soil testing would, um, be looking at, but given the previous use of the lot, is there any kind of stipulation or testing for contamination?
Keith, I'd be happy to address that if you'd like.
Sure, and DEP's comments were about, um, soil testing just for infiltration of the stormwater basins, but it's still a good question.
Keith, is it okay if I, or?
Yeah, go right ahead, Sergio.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, sorry. Um, so there's two different types of soil testing we're talking about here, one of which is environmentally, and one is, has to do with stormwater. Uh, we have no problem with respect to stormwater, uh, honoring the, the town engineer's comment, uh, we, we've done it on, uh, actually a recent project from, for my client. We just go out, we verify the soil capacity can handle infiltration, and, um, if it does, then so be it, the, the soils can remain. If they don't, then we have to overexcavate and make sure that we dig down to a, um, an original soil strata of natural occurring soil and replace all of the fill with, uh, with appropriate, um, well-draining, uh, gravel soils. The second part, which I believe Lynn you were referring to, was the environmental. Uh, we have to have, have had a phase one environmental study done and a phase two, which had resulted in the, uh, removal of the, um, the tank, and, uh, that there, there was, uh, storage, fuel storage tanks underground, that being an old service and gas station. Um, so all the appropriate, uh, precautions and protocols are being adhered to with respect to the environmental remediation of the site.
Thank you.
I have one last question, um, Sergio or Elena, so what is the final height of the green wall going to be? I'm sorry to pound this into the ground, but I've heard, I, I think, two different things now. Is it the height of the Mystic Junction building, or the cordless below that ultimate height of the Mystic Junction building?
It's shown on the elevations, my understanding is it's the height of the Mystic, that, that building. It's to meet the top of that building.
That, that's correct, it's going to be at the height of the building. And it's something I, I respect, we respectfully request that, uh, the condition, uh, number nine be, uh, be removed from the stipulations.
And, and just to, just to refresh my memory, how many feet um, between the wall and the, the building that we're talking about?
I'm not sure, clarify the question, you're asking how many feet between what wall and the building? Oh, you mean between the abutting building?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I got a little confused there.
Yeah, no, no, I didn't, I wasn't clear.
Okay, it's, it's shown on the plan, we've, we've met, we look, we sought to keep with the five, five-foot setback, five foot off the, the property line.
So it's five foot off, it's, so it's within, um, the setback requirements?
Yes.
And is it, okay, thank you.
It meets, it meets the, uh, the rear setback record, I believe that's considered a side, side yards, uh, setback requirement. And which is, which is the, the five feet, uh, same for the, the structure. Um, and then the building itself, I believe, the adjacent property building, if my memory serves me correctly, is, is somewhere but in the neighborhood of another four to five feet off of the, uh, off their property line.
Thank you.
Is, is Chuck on? Did Chuck join us by any chance?
Yes, he's here.
Chuck and Ryan, we're going to close the public hearing, do you have any questions at this time?
Now, Mr. Chairman, uh, the revised plans that were submitted by Shurenzia addressed all of my issues, and I thank Sergio for the, the quick turnaround time and the, the complete job that he did in addressing my questions, thank you. I have no further questions.
Ryan?
Ryan, this is Ryan, and I also agree, uh, the revised plans, you know, answered the questions that I had adequately, and thank you for so many of those, so I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one, one additional thing for the record. Uh, the, the WPCA Commission met tonight, that's where I was between 7:00 and 7:50, and I joined the meeting at 7:50.
Okay, thank you.
You're back.
Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion at this time? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. Do I hear a motion on this application?
I'll make a motion to approve the application with the stipulations that were covered in the last meeting, and this, with the exception of stipulation number nine.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So this is just for the SUP, not the waivers, not the CAM, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So, so this is Lynn, I'll, I'll open up discussion. So, you know, I, I think that the, the team did a great job in answering some of our questions. I, uh, you know, personally don't see any need for any kind of a window in the green wall, if there's going to be a wall. Um, I actually think it might, might look a little odd, um, and I think we, we might be thinking that it would just be like a hole, but I do think you're going to see the brackets and whatnot, and I, I'm not sure that that, that would work. However, I do agree with the, uh, the comment, the, the written, um, letter that was sent in that Keith read regarding just the general design. It's, it's not so, it's not about, in my opinion, what the use of the property is. To me, it's, this is kind of moving into your historic Mystic area, and I just think the, the, the whole design concept, yes, there's some details in the design, you know, um, on the corners and whatnot, but it's, it's just not fitting with the, the overall neighborhood. And yes, you can say, well, you've got, you know, a brick, um, train station design, which is, in my opinion, is historic, you've got Victorian-type, um, buildings, kitty corner, um, et cetera, but this, this, this to me is, is kind of really far-reaching as to fitting in with the neighborhood. So again, it's not a use, it's more the, the design of the building itself.
Lynn, Lynn, I don't see, uh, a lot of style difference between this building, for instance, and Bravo Bravo, which is right downtown. You know, it's not historic, but then there isn't, there isn't much in that neck of the woods.
I, I think that two things, we, we really don't have much say on design, even though we should, but we, it's not in our regulation. I think that, two things, we really don't have much say on design, even though we should, but it's not in our regulation. And some of these CAD programs don't do a good enough job to show what it really does look like. But I, we don't, if I write Keith on that, we don't have much say in design.
Not as far as like a real hard and fast, you know, design standards. You know, the process that we've set up is that applications go to the architectural design review board, which itself is an advisory board, offers comments to this board. And that board did review this application for three meetings, which is probably the most of any in about 10 years, and did lead to some changes in the, in the design of the building and the landscaping. And that board was, you know, pointed out that it's not really their role to sort of enforce traditional architecture. That's more their job to sort of enhance a building's design, whatever style it is. So that's how they approached this also. You know, if the town does want more say in having architecture that's more historic nature or based upon historic district, is the option of adopting a village district, excuse me, a village district through zoning, which gives more to this sort of thing as applications reviewed by a consultant who's an expert. The commission more say in architecture, but we don't have that. For the record, it was in a recommendation in the draft POCD in 2015, but a lot of members of the business community and the Board of Selectmen at the time were pretty opposed to the idea, and it was taken out of the POCD. That is the way to get this sort of thing into zoning with more.
So thanks for that, Keith. So a couple of things, you know, I mean, this is what we consider the village. You know, downtown Mystic. I mean, this is how we refer to it all the time. We want that village atmosphere. We want it to be mixed use. We want it to be like a village where people are walking around, et cetera. So, yeah, technically, you know, it's not in the zoning. I just, what is in the zoning is that it fits in with the neighborhood. And, you know, I mean, Fred, I think, I think the Bravo building is too big for the neighborhood. I actually think that's a mistake. And not that I don't like the design of the building, I just think it's too big. It's just too big. So I don't know. That's just my opinion, and I think that there were other people who had that opinion in the neighborhood and have come forward, so I think we should consider it.
Thank you, Lynn. Any other discussion on the motion? But do I understand the motion that the green wall is just going to stay the green wall without any light holes in it for windows? Am I correct on that?
I believe so.
Yeah.
I believe so.
Yeah, I think it's a lot better than having holes in it. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye, opposed.
So aye.
Aye?
I'm ayes.
Yeah. Motion carried, four to one.
We have to have the CAM application, and I believe the waivers for the special use permit also.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the waivers.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. We have one more.
Make a motion to approve the CAM.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion approved.
Thank you.
To the members of the commission, it looks like we will not have a meeting the first Tuesday of December. We have nothing on the agenda. And we have not had any new applications come in this month. So the next meeting will be on the 15th, which we will have a hearing on the Mason's Island Property Owners Association. And that is it.
David, David, this is Fred. I'm going to have to recuse myself from that hearing because the Mason's Island principals are both friends and neighbors, so you're going to need an alternate for that hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Fred. Any other business?
Are we opening that hearing as Keith says in his report?
What?
Are we, it says, "Public hearing to be opened and immediately closed."
Are we going to open it tonight? Okay.
I don't know. Do we need to, Keith?
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out. Yeah, we will.
Let's do that.
Okay. I'm going to skip the opening paragraph, if that's all right with everybody.
Yeah.
It's good.
All right. So on PZ 2009 SUP and CAM, Mason's Island Company and Mason's Island Property Owners Association, P. Biscotti, Special Use Permit and Coastal Area Management Site Plan Review Applications to accompany future zoning permit application for construction of a single-family residence with onsite septic system, driveway, retaining walls, and related site improvements. Property located at Great Marsh Road Mystic, assessor's map, 180 Block 2, Lot 36F in Great Marsh Road, private right-of-way, zones RA-20 and RC-120.
Do I hear a motion to continue this hearing?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Continued until December 15th. I think that's it. Anything else, Keith?
No, that's it.
That's it?
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Stay safe.